Hello, my name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Land Capacity Analysis. We'll start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Alves, Moore, and Scootley. The following planning commissioners are on Zoom. Commissioner Fritsch and Commissioner Russell and Commissioner Corbin are absent. With five planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Vice Chair Alves.
All right, my name is Jason Alves. I'd like to call to order the May 28th, 2024 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for today and the agenda is displayed on the screen. Would entertain a motion as second from the Planning Commission to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at all? All right. Yeah, so let's vote on that.
Aye.
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 Motion passes with five yes votes.
All right, and prior to tonight, the commission received the meeting notes from the May 14th, 2024 meeting. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes? Doesn't look like it. If I would entertain a motion as second to adopt the minutes.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote on that as well.
Aye.
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 Motion passes with five yes votes.
Uh, the next item is public comments.
There are no members of the public in attendance tonight.
All right, so. So tonight's agenda item is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Land Capacity Analysis. Say that 10 times fast and uh. If you want to go ahead, I'll just skip all the rest of that.
Okay, that sounds good. We'll move right into it since it's just us. Thank you so much. Mindy Brooks, Community Development. Um, so as you guys know. One of the biggest parts of the comp plan work is the land capacity analysis. Um, this is the second of three workshops you're going to have specifically on this topic. And we're doing that because it's really important that you understand land capacity analysis. You don't have to understand all the nitty gritty of it, but understand what it is, how it's used. All that. Hold on. Bob, we didn't think you were coming today. Are you, are you? Uh, we locked up because we thought we didn't think you were coming today. So hi, welcome. Bob Russell's here now. Yep. Sorry for the disruption, Gretchen. So as I was saying, this is, this is the second of three. We want to make sure you guys really understand this. A lot of what comes later in the comp plan is based on the land capacity analysis, not least of which is urban growth area boundary changes. So it's pretty important. You do not approve the land capacity analysis. That's not a document that you prove. It's a technical document. But you will be, you know, recommending the UGA changes if there are any or zoning changes in the UGA if there are any. And that is based on the land capacity analysis. So. It's just super important that you understand it. In just a few weeks, we're going to give you the document, the actual report. It's extremely technical. It has a lot of technical attachments to it. So I'm trying to just set the stage. That's what these first two meetings are about is setting the stage. So when you get that document, you can dive in and read it. Take it to bed. It'll be a great bedtime reading. It'll help you fall asleep, I promise. And then we will have a meeting where we actually look at the results of it and what those results might mean. Next slide. So today we're just going to go over um. A few things. You've actually received one and two. Those are, these are going to be repeats. Why do we do it? What the heck is it? Like, how do we do it? So these are few, and then I'm going to start to talk a little bit about some of the results that are coming in. But these are all really draft. So this is just some preliminary look at stuff. Next slide. So why do we do this? Counties and cities have to demonstrate that we have enough land that is zoned to accommodate the next 20 years of population growth. That is a requirement for the cities and the counties. Accommodate means housing and jobs, right? So we're going to have a certain number of people show up. They need to live somewhere and we'd like them to have a job. That's, that's what accommodate means. Plus, the infrastructure and the services that are needed for them, right? So we'll have a capital facilities plan, all kinds of stuff that is based also in that population. Next slide. This is the RCW. That we follow. A lot of, a lot of RCWs, but this one is an important one. So. Remember that most growth needs to go into urban growth areas, right? Most growth needs to be cities, UGAs. We set the boundaries of the urban growth area. And that is based on land capacity analysis and the capital facilities planning work, right? So those are the two big things that go into ma- making determinations about where the UGAs are going to go. And I can't, I guess I cannot say this enough. We set the UGA boundaries. Right? So we're going to get a ton of data from the cities, lots and lots and lots of information from the cities, but it's still our decision to make. So I want to support you in being rigorous in looking at the land capacity analysis and asking the hard questions as we go through this. Next. Um, the way that we've done this in the past is not how we are doing it this time. Because the rules around housing changed. So in the past, it was. Can you accommodate through enough dwelling units? And that was just really the answer. Yes, we can put enough dwelling units in the UGAs to accommodate our population. We can't do it like that anymore. Now we have to talk about. Income, um, housing that is affordable at all income brackets. So the analysis has changed when it comes to housing. We're not allowed to just say, yes, we can accommodate the dwelling units. We need to accommodate different brackets in it. So. When you see the information, the, the second half of it, if you've looked at these before in the past, is all new. It's all new to everybody in the whole state. And we're working with commerce guidance and, and trying to come up with a good method for it, but it is new to us. Next slide. So here are population allocations. This is what we have to accommodate over the next 20 years. You guys recommended these. These were set last June. This is what we're working with. Significant growth. Chehalis, Toledo, Winlock. These are the cities that we're paying closest attention to because they took a lot of population growth in them. Next slide. And these are the housing allocations. Again, this is what you guys recommended and B O C C adopted last June. The focus again, Chehalis, Toledo, Winlock. And that's because the population allocations are the direct input into this. So it's a model that spits out. If this is how many people you are. Planning on accommodating, this is how much housing you need at each income bracket. So this is what everybody has to use to do that piece of can we accommodate the housing? I'm not going to get so much into jobs. Jobs will be part of the analysis as well. You will see that. But because this housing stuff is so new, that's where we're going to spend most of our focus. The employment stuff is how it's been done in the past. Okay, next slide. So the steps, how do we do this? I'm going to walk through the steps three times. I tell you the steps, we're going to walk through the steps, I'm going to tell you the steps again. So what are the steps? We figure out the acres of each zone. Right? So everybody, their cities, UGAs, all the counties zoned for different uses. We figure out the acres of each zone. We apply density assumptions to those. Right? So how much residential density can be expected based on the zoning? We identify the vacant, partially vacant and underutilized land. So we can figure out what will fully develop and what is partially redevelopable. Then we do deductions. We deduct for critical areas, deduct for future public uses like parks and streets, infrastructure as well for streets. And we apply a market factor. The market factor is. The fact that density now says, single family residential inside the UGA must allow. One single family and two ADUs. That's what the law says. But nope, not everybody's going to do that, right? Not everybody in the single family is going to put two ADUs on their lot. So the market factor allows you to adjust for what is actually anticipated, not what the maximum capacity is. Next slide. So we're going to look at Packwood. Um, I'm using Packwood because we're going to propose a UGA for this and we did assign population and housing to the, to Packwood. The UGA will probably not cover this entire area. It'll probably cover where sewers serve, but there will be an urban growth area there. So again, we start with zoning. And the uses that are allowed in each zone. So for example. Residential low allows single family and ADUs. So our home-based business, so they get an employment factor in there too. In the mixed-use zone, single-family residences will not be allowed, but multifamily residences will be and much more commercial will be allowed. So we have to look at each of these zones and we assign those, those assumptions based on the allowed uses that'll be in there, what we think the density of development will be for housing and employment. And the question is, based on the zoning. How many more dwelling units? How many more jobs can Packwood accommodate over the next 20 years? And is that enough for the anticipated growth? The answer for Packwood is yes, there's plenty. So we, we will get into Packwood's deep analysis next time, but. It's an easy, it's an easy yes here. Um, infrastructure is the problem, not zoning. Um, but we're going to get like, we're going to go, let's talk a little bit about the details here. So let's start with, let's keep looking at this. Let's look at residential low. So if we say residential low. We could say that the minimum is four units per acre. So we assume that that is quarter acre lots, four units per acre. But it can go up from there, right? Because there's going to be some ADUs. You have to make assumptions about how many of those go in. Mixed-use zone, the um, minimum or the average probably will be about 16, 16 units per acre. Commercial, you're looking at probably about 26 average units per acre. Um, we assume commercial provides 20 jobs per acre. So you put that in there and then you go to the next step, next slide. Then you figure out how much land is actually developable. So that zoning is all, what are your assumptions based on the allowed uses, right? But now we got to figure out what land is actually developable. So remember that land use and zoning are different things. This map is a land use map. Zoning is what is allowed, all the uses that are allowed. Land use is what is actually happening on the ground. Right? So all the uses aren't happening on every site. Every site has a use. There's other things that's allowed, but this is the land use map. The light yellow are vacant. So we assume vacant can be developed, right? The rest of it is developed, but that doesn't mean that it can't develop more. So for example, if you have a five acre parcel with one house on it and it's an area of residential low, it can be divided into quarter acre lots. If we assume one house per lot, then that five acre parcel can accommodate. Uh, 19 more houses plus the one that's there. Right? So we have vacant and we have lots that are developed, but they can, but they can develop out more. The other one that we look at is. Lots where the improvements are less valuable than the underlying land. Those are likely to flip. Right? Where the, the structure on it is just not as valuable as the land is. So you look at those as those uh, have a market factor of how quickly they'll flip over, over time. Next slide. Then we do deductions. We deduct critical, critical areas. This is not a 100% deduction across the board because you can develop in some of our critical areas as long as there's mitigation involved. So the deductions are based on the type of resources and those all go into this very big spreadsheet that we're developing out. I like to just look at this in my brain as a table. It's like zones, assumptions, how many vacant acres? We're deducting for streams and wetlands and floodplain. It's like this huge matrix that you're just building out when you do this. So we deduct for that. Next slide. Then we talk about how much land is going to be need, needed for streets and parking and utilities. And we talk about open space requirements and other, and other types of service requirements. Dedicated uses. There are going to be pump stations for sewer in this area, right? So you start to deduct out all of those things that you, that you can assume mean that that land isn't fully developable, right? And that is how we get to the end. So we'll go back through the steps here. Acres of each zone, apply your assumptions on your density, identify your vacant, partially vacant, underutilized. Deduct your critical areas, deduct your public uses and infrastructure. And apply a market factor. And that's going to tell you in your urban growth areas in your city limits. What your capacity is for dwelling units, right? And then you get to apply the people per household to it and that'll give you if your population's there or not. So it's just this huge mathematical problem that we all get to go through to get to the answer. Of how much capacity is in the city, is in the urban growth area to accommodate. The growth over the next few years. If there's enough capacity. You're done. If there's not enough capacity, then we have to talk about options. Right? So what are your options? Change your zoning. More multifamily equals more density of people equals more people in that space. Do you have the infrastructure to serve it? That's a big question mark, right? If you're going to make that choice. Or make changes to the urban growth area, pull more land in that you can put people on. Also, can you serve it? There's always an infrastructure question. Can you serve it? Um, so you, af- after you realize like, oh, we don't have enough. Land to accommodate, then we start having to make all those other choices about changing zoning or changing the urban growth area. Because remember, we all have to accommodate the populations that are allocated to us. So you can't just say no. You have to demonstrate that you're going to accommodate it. So. There's just certain ways you can do it. So before we go to the next slide, are there any questions about the analysis?
Excuse me, do you ever go back and, and look at what has worked and what has not worked?
In terms of what? So explain to me what you mean has and hasn't worked.
Well. Uh, obviously I live in Winlock or just outside and this is a, a daily uh, review for us. The UGA turned into an annexed area and. Most of the properties are just vacant, you know? It, it totally unnecessary.
So um, before I answer what would happen with those properties, the intention of the UGA is to annex it. So as part of your, yeah, part of your scrutiny should be, these are the spaces that are supposed to be annexed. Those areas absolutely may sit vacant for the next 15 or 20 years because it's a 20-year look. So you need to accommodate 20 years of growth.
Right, but we had previously beautiful farmland. Due to speculation bought up and, and traded, is still being traded. Houses are not being built because there's no market for the houses. And the land is sitting there empty and growing weeds. So the farmland is not being used. And the, our good intentions have gone for naught. Because I think we were too optimistic about, I forgive me, I don't know about your involvement with Winlock. But I was on the Winlock Commission, Planning Commission back then and uh. It, it was not a pretty sight.
Yeah, so. Our, so our only role in it is taking that population allocation that's been made for the next 20 years and looking at the analysis that's given to us. And determining is there, isn't there sufficient capacity for that based on the zoning? That is in place. And then we look at the changes to the zoning or changes to the UGA. What, what comes afterwards in terms of the actual development is on ours.
We should do some, some review of our own efforts and see whether it's worked or not. And if it hasn't worked, maybe we should change our approach.
So. I guess offline, maybe we should talk more about what worked means because from the state standpoint, worked simply means you've demonstrated that there's capacity for development based on the housing allocation. If you demonstrate there's capacity based on the allocations that are put in place, then we've met our state obligation. So that's worked. Now, if the question is. Were the allocations made correctly? Do we assign too much population to spaces? That's a really great question. And so when we do our updates of how, of the population allocations, which is every five years, that's a really important question to ask ourselves. Are we allocating the population correctly across the board? If it's not growing as fast as previously, then we should drop that allocation down. Right? And that will change what happens within the UGA. So. That's sort of the check and balance is to look at uh, population trends and what the forecasts are and, and do you scale back? Because the development isn't happening because it's not growing that fast is kind of the check and balance there. Since these population allocations are set, these are the ones that we're working with. It'll be five years from now when we go back and do a check again uh, with a new OFM forecast. But I, I think, I mean, other than that, I would say we can talk offline about how else can we. Check it other than to be, to heavily, heavily scrutinize the decisions we're making this round based on that population. And we can go back up and look. Why don't we, why don't we do that really quick? Let's scooch up really quickly back up to the population slide. It's slide six. Yep.
Question on point seven there. Oh, market, market factor. I'm sure you've spent enough time on that, but I need. What, tell me again now, what is that market? Is that the correction factor? What are the. Two or three drivers of that correction factor? Maybe you just said that. Say it again.
Yeah, so it's, the example I like to use is in single-family zoning. Where we traditionally say that's single-family homes. The state now mandates that it's single-family homes plus you have to allow up to two ADUs. So if you just did the straight analysis based on acreage, you would apply three units per acre because that's the max, right? Not everybody's going to do that. In a single-family zone, people, not everybody's going to do that. There, a lot of them are going to choose not to. So we apply a market factor to what we assume would actually happen. And those are in the state's guidance as to what market factors can be. Or you can use historical trends to look at uh, different zones, like that particular one, you can't use a historical trend because that's a new requirement. But you can look at like a multifamily zone that allows a minimum and maximum density and say, yes, but this is what we build out at. Right? So you can pull it back using that market factor from your max capacity. That makes sense?
This is what we build out at because we want to have a certain amount of openness.
It's just what the market is supporting. It's, you know, usually in the like a multi, I'll pick on multifamily. In multifamily, it's usually like you can build up to 26 units per acre. But maybe in your jurisdiction, you're only seeing 16 units per acre. That's what the market is supporting. That's what the developers are building. They're not building the maximum. So rather than using the maximum, you would say in our market, even though you, we could build out that high, the market is only supporting this type of housing. So you'll see a mix of using the state assumptions or applying trend analysis in their own jurisdictions and that's all in the methodology.
Early on on this, didn't you explain that we are responsible for providing the opportunity? For the density in the building, but we're not responsible for building it. So maybe nobody will ever build it and it'll only be a, a field of weeds for 50 more years.
In which case we better get it out of the UGA. And then on that, if.
But if you don't expand it and uh, aren't you putting some artificial pressure on?
Well, you will be because you'll be taxed in that way. Yes.
Well, just, you didn't have it available, so it'd get it really expensive.
Right.
So that's when then we would, as citizens, we'd be arguing, hey, open it up. The stuff's too expensive. Let's open the UGA up.
Right. So the whole point of the urban growth area is to constrain where development goes and the result of that is it does drive up value within the UGA. That's. That is the outcome of it.
Shrink the UGA, what, tell me what that means. You shrink it back down? Do you rezone it?
Yeah, you get it out of an urban density and put it back into the rural density.
So you downzone then?
Yep, yep. And areas that are not developing that you're not going to provide services to, you're still planning in your capital facilities plan to serve those, which is hurting the way you do your taxes and your budgeting. You should get that land out if you're not, if it's not going to go urban, then it should go back to an R D D five, R D D 10.
Do you happen to know, I'm dealing with this in Pierce County, so it's an interesting question. Do you happen to know if in Lewis County, if they're proposing to downzone that we are required to notify the property owner?
Yeah, we have to notify the property owner. We change their zoning.
Yeah, I think that's fair. In Pierce County, they are not notifying.
People will know that we're changing zoning.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's, I'm glad to hear that.
It will go back to uh, to what? R D D five or R D D 10, if that's what it was before, right? Whatever.
It's, it's actually up to us, the county. So we can either take it to whatever it was before, if it had zoning before that applies. Or if we don't think that was appropriate, we can do an analysis to determine if a different zoning is appropriate, but it would be a rural zone, not an urban zone. So five, the R D D five is our minimum lot size, so.
And Bob, you don't, you don't want to do it if you don't have to because you're going to have a lot of really angry people in these chairs out there if they came in and bought the. The pasture in, in Winlock for a uh, thinking they were going to put in multifamily and now we downzone it and they're going to put in five houses. You want to hear mad people? That, that, that's who it is.
There's, I mean, there's both sides. So you're going to, you know, if somebody purchased property anticipating that they're going to get a high, an urban level of development once services are available. And the city comes back and says, we're not going to serve this area. Well, yes, those property owners bought on spec. Right? And if the, and if the city isn't going to serve it over the next 20 years, then it likely should not be in the urban growth area. Will that make them upset?
That's exactly, that's exactly where Winlock is right now. The services are way behind the growth that was proposed. And it expected that never happened.
Yeah, so, so this is always a question. Will we ask that the cities provide us with the documentation? When we do our urban growth boundary changes, we ask for your land capacity analysis, your updated capital facilities plan to demonstrate service, again, 20 years of service. So that's exactly what you're going to be looking at.
Comprehensive plan.
Right. So that's what you guys are going to be looking at this time is all that updated information. To make sure that you agree with what is being put in front of you. Yeah. So I was going to say the other side of it is there are property owners sometimes in the urban growth area. They don't want to be in it and they don't want to be annexed and they want to stay rural and they're very happy to be taken out. So you get a mix of both when you have that conversation. I would always just encourage you guys and the commissioners, make the decisions based on the numbers in front of you, right? What's the land capacity? What are the capital facilities? What is the, the, you know, realistic to be served? All of those things are, are where we are by law supposed to be making our decisions. Avoiding the critical areas, all those things, all those lists of stuff is how we're supposed to make all these decisions. So yeah, I wanted to put this back up really quick before we move on. This is our um. These are the allocations that were made. So we're not looking to adjust these. So you can see that Chehalis. Toledo and Winlock. Have a lot of growth. Over the next 20 years that we've, that we've allocated to them. And so this is what they have to use for their land capacity analysis and their capital facilities planning is that number. So when we test it, and I'll show you how it gets tested in a second, what the numbers look like as we tested them. It'll, we'll say. Hey, Winlock's population in 2045 is set at 4,756 people. Can you accommodate that with your land capacity analysis, jobs and housing? Can you serve it? That's not the step. We're not there yet. Can you serve it will be another question. And you can see there that we do allocate to Onalaska and we've allocated to Packwood as well. As well as other rural. Everywhere else, so. Any other questions? About land capacity analysis?
Looks like Gretchen's got her hand raised.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, I guess I'm sort of, I'm listening to all of this, very interested and just really. Crunching my brain up about, about Packwood and um. How the zoning for downtown Packwood is about to change. And single-family homes will no longer be allowed to be built in certain areas. This is all speculation on, on the sewer coming in. Um. What, so that, that begs the question, can you serve it? And at this point, the answer is no. And what if? And what if five years sewer is still not in and people are being told they can't build a home? Um, is, is that when you, at what point would you go in? I guess when there's more clarity on the future of the sewer, but, um, are you? I don't even know what my question is really, except that right now the answer is probably no, you can't serve it. So I guess I'm interested in to hear how this presentation goes along to, to better understand them.
Yeah, absolutely. Until we have a little bit more on sewer, we wouldn't be able to apply the urban growth area. But the sewer is fiscally constrained, meaning that it does have funding and we've received some additional funding and applying for more. So you, you don't have to demonstrate service exists today for the urban growth area. You have to demonstrate that you can serve it. So I agree Gretchen, we don't have enough to, right now, to apply that UGA to Packwood and make those changes reasonably. However, we, um, we are hopeful that by the time we're actually in hearing to do that, that we will have enough information around sewer to be, you know, solid that yes, this is the area that will be served.
I'll save my comments. I'm curious to hear more about.
Yep. Um, the other weird thing about Packwood is Packwood is mostly small, you know, small town mixed use and it already allows all this stuff. It just doesn't get it because there's no sewer. So if you do the capacity analysis, it's actually pretty high even because there's, there is water, you know, so it's onsite septic, but there's water. It's actually the capacity, Packwood has a lot of capacity, even if you don't change the zoning more than it needs. So to hit that 1,200 mark.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Because you can build, you, you, even though it's in, in a UGA or anything, you can build a single family home on a septic if there's no sewer available, can't you?
Of course.
Yeah.
We see it all the time in Packwood.
So, and then the, the, when you put it in the UGA, you're saying that sometime within the next 20 years, you're going to have all this stuff available, right?
Right. You have to demonstrate that you will be able to serve it with urban services.
So in the meantime, between now and 20 years, you know, part of that is going to be utilized at a lower
Yes.
density or
Absolutely. Yep.
So when we look at the map of all the current UGAs and the city comes and says, yep, in the next 20 years, we don't plan on putting any water or sewer down here in this UGA area. Then is it? Do we leave that a UGA or be like, well, you know, if you want to subdivide it to the max, you can't put onsite sewer in a well on a postage stamp because of all the setbacks. So then it's an undevelopable piece of property for the next 20 years. So then do we just recommend we take it out of the UGA?
That's up to you guys, but my, my professional opinion would be yes. If we can't serve it, if, if the jurisdiction can't serve it over the next 20 years, per the RCWs, it should not be in the urban growth area. It's, it's not appropriate. We have oversized UGAs though, so it's a sensitive, I think what Commissioner Spogen said is right. It's a sensitive issue. So I would expect if there are shrinkings of UGAs that we will hear from property owners about that.
And they, they, they change, you know? What he said is kind of correct. You might predict that this is what's going to happen based on your current trend. But you know, somebody opens up somewhere, you know, so it's legitimate to say, well, we thought it was going to go that way, but it's not.
Yeah. And a lot of, um, infrastructure is driven by development, right? Like the mains are going to come from the jurisdiction, but building out of a very large subdivision is going to be paid for by the developer. And so if you have people with deep pockets and they're in the UGA and the city says to them, well, you got to pull that main out another quarter mile, they might say, okay, I'll pull the main out. If you've got capacity, the treatment facility, happy to pay for that main because they're going to make up for that easily. So, um, that private public partnership comes into play significantly when you're looking inside the UGA and, and the development that happens.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
With the numbers for Chehalis at 133 and Winlock at 124. And if my memory serves me correctly, I think we asked once, what was the last 20 year increase from this current population of, say for Chehalis, 9,800? And I think the number was like 14%, but you, you'd have to correct me. I'm just guessing. And now we're saying it's going to be this big number. Aren't we in essence okaying UGAs because somebody allowed we, and I can't remember what all the factors were that that they proved to us that was going to be 133, you know, I love numbers. And I can't remember what, how they proved that to us, but that drives UGA creation, right?
Or, or changes to zoning. So a lot of Chehalis, a lot of their analysis that went into this was, um, using projects that were already in the pipeline, like Raindrop. And say, and saying, this is how, this is how much we expect is coming. This is how much people and housing that's going. So a considerable portion of that was actually development in the pipeline. And so they actually predicted their population with development in the pipeline being over that. Um, we questioned their ability to serve it heavily, if you remember. We had a lot of, are you sure? Are you sure? Are you sure you're going to serve it? And they were very adamant that they would. Um, but that, yeah, that's how we got to that, those numbers. Yeah, absolutely. I still think it's a pretty big number. I'll continue to go on the record as that's a pretty big number. So. Yeah. Okay, let's look at the last slide. Well, not the last.
Oh, just clarifying question, just for me. So if, can I have that back up again?
Oh, you want to go back to population? Sorry, Megan, we're flipping you all over. Back to population.
So if Chehalis had said, yes, we agree that's too big a number. Uh, we won't do that. Let's keep it at whatever the average was, 50% or 25%. Uh, let's keep it at the average. Wouldn't that give us more authority to go grab some UGAs and pull them back? Because we have, we have, I don't know where UGAs, maybe Winlock, like isn't the same argument the one in Winlock, he's making the argument, we created this property. Well, heck, we're saying they're going to, we're still saying they're going to be people there. So
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying, but seems to me like if we agree with that number, we gotta leave the UGAs.
No, absolutely. We, for those three cities in particular, we, we were the ones who recommended this population allocations. The Board of County Commissioners approved them. And so this is what we're saying. They now need to demonstrate they can, they can accommodate. Right? So this is why I say what we do is really important, right? So this is where we're at now. We're not changing these. That was a big process. That's where we're at. Five years from now, we'll be able to calibrate.
My original question, getting back was, you have in here four, 4,756 people for Winlock doubled or more. It hasn't happened. It, it's not happening. Do we go back and, and think about this and plan better?
Right. We don't right now because that number was just adopted and that number is the 2045 population allocation. In five years, when we redo population allocations, we calibrate. Right? So we literally just adopted those.
Right. So, so let's say the population of Winlock has dropped. Do we change at that point, five years from now?
Yeah. So five years from now, OFM will give us new 20 year projections, right? So OFM gives us a high, medium, low 20 year projection. We take that, we work with our cities to, to allocate it out per jurisdiction. Before we went into this, I just did trend analysis over the past 20 years to determine like, what do we think things might go forward? And then we allowed the cities to give us their predictions. Um, so that's when we can calibrate, right? So in five years, if this growth projection at 125%, which is pretty intense, is not happening. In five years from now, it's like, mm, looks like you're growing at this rate. That is the opportunity to scale back. Right? If, if it's appropriate at that time.
They've already made the commitment to us that they're going to provide services, which no services have been provided yet.
Right. So again, in five years, we'll be able to calibrate, but this is what you're looking at here is the 2045. So we're still at 20 years out. So services don't have to be provided now. That, that allocation number, the services is a 20 year timeframe. Right? So in five years, we'll do, the next 20 years, we'll be looking at the 2050 population allocation, the 2050, can you serve it? So you're looking out a really long ways in doing this, but that's why we calibrate or can calibrate every five years, right? Because it's hard to predict that far out. So we can calibrate, we can change things. People say, five years ago, we thought we were going to serve this space. We thought the space was going to develop over here. It looks like it's not going to happen. It's an opportunity to adjust. Right?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo what you're saying. It's, I don't know if we're getting hung up on this, but you know, we're, it's a constantly rolling 20 years and every five years we get to address it. And it's certainly an imperfect science, you know, as market conditions change really fast. And I mean, obviously you guys know this, but I mean, just recently in this area, market conditions have changed in both directions really, really quickly. So, um, yeah, so we do get a chance every five years to go, okay, let's take the temperature, see if this 20 year thing is working. And then we plan for the next 20 years. At that point, again, it's just a rolling five year thing. It's, um, it's based on 20 years, but every five years it gets to be adjusted and there, that's why it's called speculation, you know, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to predict and things can change really, really quickly. And, but yeah, I think I just wanted to kind of
No, yeah, no, that's, yeah, spot on. You got it right. Lee was wondering, she asked me if you were also asking if not just the UGA changes, but are you also interested in de-annexation? Because at this point they've annexed pretty much their whole UGA, so they don't have UGA, they're, they're annexed in a city. So you're asking about de-anexing?
Why, I can't imagine the city of Winlock would do that. It's none of, none of my business anyway. Um, we're just talking in general here.
Yeah. So the annexation, once we've set a UGA, we're saying that is the area that should be annexed. And once they do that, they do that. Can you de-annex? You can. It's a process.
Do you see my point?
Yeah, absolutely. No, absolutely.
The speculation and, and some might say greed, uh, uh, starts and grows and grows and grows. That doesn't mean there's anything behind it to, to substantiate what's going on.
Right? No, I completely see your point. And I guess what I'm just offering is we have, we, Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners need to scrutinize every single step really heavily. So we're not going to adjust these numbers, but the next step of if somebody says, well, we should change the UGA boundary because we need scrutinize the heck out of it. Read their, I mean, read the methodology of it, see what they're saying, see the assumptions they're making, right? Question everything, pushback, right? Are you sure you can't zone higher density? Are you going to be able to serve this? These are appropriate questions that you should absolutely be asking. Because it's our jurisdiction to ask those. So I totally agree. It's just the question of do we recalibrate five years from now? That's when we recalibrate, not now. Okay, let's go to the last slide. Um, so these are draft results. You're going to see the real results coming out pretty soon. Um, these are the three cities we're actually focused on because they took a lot of population. And I put an asterisk by the top one. So I got Chehalis's on Friday. And I was like, you know what? This doesn't actually make sense because their methodology to set their population said that they would exceed that population. And now they're saying they don't have enough capacity. So put the numbers in here, but, uh, my question back to them is going to be, hmm, this isn't what you said before. You better reconcile this for us. Because based on what they said in going into their population allocation, they had enough land and the development that was occurring was going to hit this population. So, um, I put an asterisk by it because like I said, I got it Friday afternoon. Haven't looked into it very much. I'm like, that doesn't, doesn't pass the stiff test.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
So, right. I mean, this, these are very different numbers, um, and clearly. Um, and, um, so I'm, I'm curious, I guess, I mean, there's been a lot of changeover in that jurisdiction. So is, do you attribute that to the, the difference in methodology between the people who are, who are doing, because not, it's been a different person giving these numbers over the last, yeah, every time.
Yeah. So because we just got them, I haven't dug deep yet to see, to like, look back at all the methodology. But it was their city council that asked us for that higher population as well. So, um, we need to dig deeper. We need to ask some questions. I don't believe what I'm seeing there. So.
Right. And then now we're going to have a new city manager
Yes.
in a week. And so that will be another
Yep.
person. And we've got a lot of changeover in the city council as well, it sounds like. So there's
Are you worried about Chehalis?
No. Not, not really.
In terms of like this, because I
No, I'm just, I'm more curious what you think is going on. And I mean, just like we're talking about, just so we can be better suited to ask some of, you know, I know we backed them way off of what they wanted. I, I do think, you know, Chehalis is different than some of the other ones because a lot of it we know is based off of pipeline. And I, I wanted to kind of throw this out there too, just out of curiosity. How much of this, these population projections are kind of a chicken egg thing where they are like in Chehalis's situation and more familiar with that? Um, they're so far behind in their infrastructure that they need to have a strong population allocation in order to catch up and then provide so that they can get funding and of, of all different types, you know, how much does that play into it where they go, well, look, you know, maybe we don't need this much for going forward, but we're already five or six or eight years behind. And we need to have strong numbers to be able to get the funding, to justify funding to catch up and then be where we need to be, like in Chehalis's case.
It's a complete balancing act, right? Because if you overdo it too much, when you put your capital facilities plan together, you're going to, you're going to be asking for taxes that are too much because you're going to be planning out too much. Um, so it might help you on the state grants to have a bigger number, but it's going to hurt you with your constituents. If you're undersized, your taxes may not be as high, but you're going to be playing constant catch up and you're not going to get to pull the state grants that you need for the big improvements. So it's, I mean, what we told the cities when we went into that population conversation was try to be as right as you can be. Like really try to hit a, a good, solid, we think this is real. Or else either side hurts. Right? Either answer is not good. Um, I'm really curious when I, when I said like, you know, worried about Chehalis, I'm worried about how their numbers are going to reconcile out. Right? Because this doesn't make sense to me. Haven't dug in deep. I'm worried about it. That UGA again is ours, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask you guys to just scrutinize the heck out of this stuff as it comes in. Like really read it, be in detail, ask techie questions. Ask me questions before you get in here. That's okay. It's all right for you to say, you know, hey, can I talk to you about this thing for a minute? It's totally fine. Um, so let's move on to Toledo and Winlock. Both what you see there is they have more than enough capacity. So those two, even though they took big, huge numbers, what they're showing us is they have enough cap, capacity. I will tell you, Toledo is hinting at asking for UGA expansion around jobs. And what I've recommended to them, if they want to do that, and that's a perfectly good reason to do it. We focus a lot on housing, but jobs is really important. And not every job is the same job. Right? There are jobs that pay minimum wage and there are jobs that are paid much more than that. And so it is appropriate to look at what kind of jobs you want to pull and that you have land that is zoned for it and land that is big enough for it, right? Um, a lot of your heavier land burdened jobs, industrial type of jobs can pay significantly better, but they need a lot more land to do it. Um, so we'll see what they come back with. I haven't, uh, seen their ask yet. They've just hinted at wanting to do some UGA expansion related specifically to jobs. So we'll see how that looks. And Winlock, you can see there, it looks like they have more than enough land. Which they just annexed. I didn't put any of the other cities in there. There'll be interesting conversations with all of them about what they want to do. I would not be surprised to see some pull I didn't put any of the other cities in there. There'll be interesting conversations with all of them about what they want to do. I would not be surprised to see some pullback of UGAs because of the service issue. They're not going to serve certain spaces. And so we'll be looking at pulling back in some areas. We may have some jurisdictions that ask for a trade. Where they say, well, we thought we were going to serve over here. We're not, but we can serve over here. So we want to swap. Some land around. That's fine, too. Again, just be diligent in, in looking at. Yeah. What does it mean? Look at the critical areas. I know Bob will look at the critical areas and make sure that's. You're understanding what those impacts are going to be. That is it for me tonight. Do you have any other questions? As soon as we get our side of the report done, so like what we're, we're taking in the city stuff and they're splitting it by city limits and urban growth area. Once we get all that stuff in, we'll take just the UGA portions. And put them into our analysis and get that back out to you guys to review. So it'll be a, a document that then each of their analyses becomes an appendix to it. So if you, you know, if you're reading something, you're like, I don't get it. You'll be able to go to their appendix. Dive in deep into that. All of these numbers are going to be draft because they will have not done the, they will not have finalized. Are we going to change zoning? Are we going to ask for UGA stuff? They're going to hint at a bunch of things, but they won't have made those decisions yet. So we won't have, these are not final numbers that are going to come in. Neither are they for us, final numbers. So. Because we have some choices we still get to make.
How do you? Do you have time for a question?
Yes.
Gretchen's there. Gretchen first.
Okay. Um. I was going to ask if we're, is it another presentation or workshop? Or is now the time that we talk about how do you, how do you determine the affordability? Of a house, like having to have houses available for every income level. In every place, how does that get determined? Or will we talk about that some other time?
No, it's a great question. Um, so a couple of things to keep in mind when we're talking about the housing, we don't have to prove that we're. Providing housing that's affordable at those income levels. Uh, anything below 80% AMI, you're looking at subsidy. In order to get that, right? The market doesn't produce it. And so we're not being asked to demonstrate that we are going to produce housing that's affordable at income levels. We aren't being asked to. Demonstrate that we can accommodate it. And a lot of that is zoning areas. For high density multifamily residential. Right? Because it's less expensive. And that is where you can start to put in subsidy in the future to get the lower numbers. So we will demonstrate that there is capacity. At the higher densities to accommodate that type of housing. And we will have to demonstrate that we've removed barriers to things like permanent supportive housing. So congregate housing options, um, assisted living, those kinds of things. Make sure that there's barrier free areas to. Different types of housing that can be heavily subsidized. In the future, but we will not actually have to demonstrate that that is the type of housing that comes in. There's a lot of markets, even if you zone for it. The markets are not going to produce them without subsidy.
Right. And so that. That definition that we always, that assumption that we always have that, that affordable equals. Small and multifamily, that would pretty much exclude most of unincorporated. Lewis County, who's anybody that's not in a UGA would never be able to serve. Or based on our zoning that we have currently. You can't have more than a duplex on a septic. And maybe that, maybe the introduction of the RHA will. Add some options there, but is that, is that true that that can only happen in UGAs though, that type of building?
Yep. That is true. Yeah. So in most of the rural area, you're looking at a hundred to 120% AMI.
In most of rural Lewis County is 120?
No, most of rural 20, you're looking at 100% AMI or 120% AMI is the affordability. Meaning that a person who makes 120% of AMI area median income. Would be able to afford. In theory, again, these are all theories. The market produces housing much more expensive than that. But when we count it up, most of our rural areas. Will the, the need in those brackets, the hundred, because 100 and 120% are two brackets that we have to be able to provide for. Most of that will be in the rural area because we do single family in rural area and it's expensive. So if you're, I think Gretchen, you're hinting at the fact that in the rural area. Only people who make a lot more money will realistically be able to live there. Right?
Well, and also places like, you know, Packwood might be covered by a UGA in the foreseeable future, but not Randall and not Glanoma. And not all the places in between here in the freeway. And I don't see, I don't know. But it seems to be, that does seem to be a limiting factor, the zoning, the fact that we can't put more than a duplex on. On a, on a large septic, even if their land would. Would be able to accommodate. Such a waste system, but um.
Yep.
In my opinion, that's a, that's zoning, limiting. Affordable housing.
It 100% is, and we've tried to make that argument with the state. And when we uh, put rural housing alternative through. We'll try to make that argument again.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think, I mean, I, I share your opinion 100%. We're in a situation where. Anybody making below 120 AMI is rapidly not able to live outside of an urban growth area. And it's, it is a problem, and I've argued this with the state. This is a problem for us because we're a very big, very rural county. And we have a lot of jobs throughout our county. We need people working in those jobs and we don't want them traveling 60 to 80 miles every single day. From the urban growth area where the housing is affordable to their job. That's just not tenable for people. So having places where there is housing that is affordable for people who are making less than 120% AMI. Throughout our county is important. Right? So that our county can work. So we have people who are working and living close to their spaces. So I, I share your opinion Gretchen. I think, I think that we've, I think the growth management act has put us in this situation.
And so there's nothing we can do in our zoning. To flex, to be more flexible with the. Yeah.
Rural housing alternative is going to be our, 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 our attempt.
Okay. All right.
I know. And then getting infrastructure. So where we're able to put in infrastructure like we are trying to do in Packwood. Those uh, lammers are spaces that if we can justify and pay for infrastructure, we can put higher density in those spaces. But. I mean, we've watched the Packwood sewer thing, how it's gone. So it's tough.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's all I'll say.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Plenty, but I'll stick to the one I wrote down and say, uh. So if. A community. Is saying they need to grow because. They've made the argument that their population is going to grow. And we've agreed to that. And we have an opportunity with UGAs and we've talked about this with UGAs. Typically. Somebody who owns some land decides he, he'll sell it to the city and that's the direction we go. If we don't want to do that and we want to put our finger on the scale and, and. Figure out how to get up on top of the hill, say. How does that play work in this discussion we're talking about? Is it, is it that we wait until the city comes to us and says? Here's the UGA and we say, no, we want the UGA up there. We'll give you a UGA on top of the hill. Could we theoretically do that? Say, we don't want any of those UGAs. We want the next development. To be, we want you to build infrastructure, a road to get up on top of that hill to get out of the. Flood plain. So therefore we're going to make you a UGA up there on top of the hill.
Yeah. So I mean, what I would urge you to do is to ask. The jurisdiction to explain to you why they chose it, where they chose it, and why they didn't choose it someplace else and demonstrate why. It couldn't go someplace else, right? Like.
So they will come to us like they did last time and, and ask for it. And we'll say, hey, did you look up on top of the hill? Can we ask that?
You, you can. You absolutely can. Yeah, I think you can. I think you can. And then it's going to be, you know, it's going to be the analysis, right? It's going to come down to. What is provided in the city's analysis? And what we want to push back. Against in their analysis and their assumptions.
You know, it's that argument you said on the UGA though, they can come to us and trade because they can say. It's easier for us to get over here. And my. I guess I'm asking this because I don't care if it's easier for you. I want you to go up there.
Yeah, but if easier is, it's going to cost us $300 million less of taxpayer dollars to do, you know what I mean?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's the analysis I want to ask.
Right.
Not necessarily where we just want to see development as a campaign.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah.
Good, good point.
Right. So I guess that's what I, when I say, ask them why they didn't choose a different space. Like show me. The numbers of why this is the right alternative. If you looked at five alternatives, is this the right one? So that's how I would push back is ask for the alternative analysis, ask them to explain why this is the right choice. Over a different choice and, and expect that they will give you. Financial numbers or critical area answers, those kinds of things. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And. Would you say that that's generally why? You know, going back to that public, private partnership, generally why they choose to go. Where develop, where a developer is going because then it takes money off the table for the taxpayer and it's. It's easier. Because there is that partnership there. Is that, is that? Typically what the driving factor is or? Or a large part of it or not at all? I don't know.
I think it's happened over time differently. I guess. Recently, we've seen some property owners want to come in to the UGA because they want to develop at a higher capacity. Presumably they're going, you know, they've got. Pockets and they want to. Build out the infrastructure inside of their development. And the city says, sure, we can extend the pipe that far. And you can go from there. I think there's other driving factors as to why the cities have set their UGAs in the past or asked to have us set the UGAs in the past in certain ways. But. It, it should be a scrutinized look, right? It should be us really thinking about where, where is service? Likely, are we avoiding the flood plain? Are we avoiding the wetlands? Are we, you know, all those questions should be asked. Are we avoiding farmland? That is one of the criteria. In the GMA is that you're avoiding, and let me be clear, it's designated farmland. You can use any rural areas farmland, but designated farmland, we should be avoiding those resource, uh, resource areas. So. There were zebras in some farmland recently. I saw some pictures. I saw some fun AI generated pictures too. So. Yeah. So you know, it's probably a mix of different things that are the factors. In different decision making. Yeah, we just have to read it. And then ask all the questions.
And I, I just wanted to say or ask one other thing. How, how big of an issue, you know, again, I'm more familiar with Chehalis and some of the other areas, but. How big of an issue do you see it? Being that the, the lack of continuity. Between um, people who are in positions of. Authority through these, these different things. I mean, I know just in my experience. It's like there's different people. Like every week. At some of these positions. And so how do you? Really move forward with any kind of a, a plan if you don't have a, any kind of continuity as far as. People working in the city who actually live. In or near the city. And can stay there long enough to see these kinds of processes through without just a, a different philosophy. I mean. If you had a sports team and you had a different coach every game. I wouldn't win very often. And so it seems like we're kind of. Seeing a lot of that. And I mean, I know there's nothing we can do about it here, but.
Yeah, it's tough.
Just throwing it out there because it seems like a problem.
Is it, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. In the absolute perfect world. You would run a methodology in this that would be easily replicable by any person. Still choices would be made. Would we rather create higher density here or here? You know, there's still those. Political decisions to be made, but in a perfect world, the methodology would spit out stuff every time that would be within a reasonable standard deviation.
You'd have a pretty structured framework to work out of all the time.
Should be pretty straightforward. We've given a very straightforward land capacity analysis methodology and asked the cities to just do that. We didn't do that with population. We let the cities propose stuff to us. So we got a mismatch from every city of something different, right?
How's that? Been received? Are they pretty open to just?
So what we did at Plan Growth Committee is we said, you guys have two options. We'll do it. Right? We'll, we'll run the numbers for the UGA. Or you guys can do it, but you're going to use the methodology we tell you. And they took option two. So, and they run them. But yeah, I mean, your point is well taken. You get different people, particularly the decision makers that can be really hard because people have different visions about where density should go and how things should look over time. And. They have different constituents that they're listening to. And so that can, that can be really challenging. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, even if they're not all, even if they're all good ideas, if they're different ideas, it's still. Still a huge challenge if you're changing horses midstream constantly.
It is. It's, it is really, really tough to do, um, particularly with the higher, the higher up leadership who are actually making the decisions, right? Having an election year midstream on comp plan update is not ideal. Speaking from an election coming. Midstream in our comp plan. It's not the best thing in the entire world. Yeah. Okay. If there's other questions, I will just reiterate when we, as we start to roll out these really techie reports, read them. Do not hesitate to ask me questions. Don't email the whole group, just email me. And we can talk about all the technical stuff. If you, you know, you want to dig into some of the things, ask me additional questions, anything that everybody should hear, we'll just add into a presentation and bring it back. For everybody to hear. If I say, hey, that's a great question. Ask me the next thing. You'll just ask me then. So. Don't hesitate to reach out. We can do one on ones. The other thing I wanted to offer is. If you want paper copies of anything that we send to you. Just already like me. We can uh, print paper copies, leave them at the office to pick up. We can, you know, for Gretchen, I can drop them off for you out there.
Yeah, yes, I would very much like paper copy. It's just so much easier for me to read through.
Absolutely. Yeah. Happy to get you guys paper copies. Okay, that's it for me.
All right. So does anybody have anything further to ask on this particular? Everybody's good? All right. Uh, go to the order, staff.
Uh, just a reminder tomorrow, there's a party in this room at 11:30 AM for Lee, who's departing. This is her last little planning commission with us. We expect to see her back as a member of the public. Can I come and comment on everything we do?
Do not expect to see me back as a member of the public. In the back. Um, but no, it is, um, my last planning commission meeting. My last day of work is Friday. But I want to thank all of you for um, the time that you've given to the county to be on the planning commission. It is not an easy job. Um, I respect all of you for what you do. Um, you know. Twice a month you show up here to digest what Mindy throws at you. And I am just incredibly proud of each and every one of you for the work that you've done. And. I would put our planning commission up against any planning commission. I think you guys are the best. And I hope. You continue to serve and I look forward to seeing the great things that you guys do.
But from afar, you're not going to tune in every other Tuesday. We're not going to see you zooming up there. Hey. Yeah, Lee's here. She just, she's missing us so much. Yeah. So if you guys are available tomorrow at 11:30 here in this room over the lunch break, there's going to be. Little celebration, a little going away. So it'd be great if you could stop by. If not, I'm sure she would take a lunch date too. One on one. So. That's it for our good of the order.
All right. Go to the order for. Planning commission.
I've got something. Um. So when we started talking about the Packwood sub area plan and we talked about. Short term rentals and that type of thing. First, my question. The county commissioners have not voted on that yet. Is that correct?
They passed the sub area plan.
They did. Okay. So.
Yeah.
So now, now. Now where are we at on that? As far as the short term rental.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we have started phase two. We've formed a new, well, a lot of the people from the old advisory committee are still on the phase two advisory committee. But we opened it back up for anybody who want to join in. We've had one meeting. We're working on the code based on that one meeting and conversation. And then we're, we have three more scheduled, so we're hitting the major big topics. Um, short term rental is part of that. So we'll be putting together draft code. Which will then come back to you guys. So we will come back for a couple of workshops, hearing or so on it, um, before it goes back to Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. So the letter that I got from the Lewis County Assessor, does that have to do with that short term rental? Code you're working on, do you know?
I don't know. I don't, what is the letter?
Read the, the whole thing, but essentially it says that they're reviewing income producing properties, which doesn't necessarily mean short term rentals, but for the twenty twenty five tax year. And to ensure accurate and fair assessment on income producing properties, we're asking the owners of these properties to share financial information. And what they want to know is my net operating income, which is my rental income less management, leasing, payroll, admin, supplies, utilities, water, heating, maintenance, painting, service, advertising, insurance, real estate tax and miscellaneous.
Did they address it to you or to, to Oregon, St. Timber? Did they give you a tax parcel?
It was to me personally, it's for Packwood. But it's not in the Subarea Plan.
And did they, and did they give you a parcel?
Yeah, an address. Yeah, they probably did. This, this is not that letter. I just bought a copy of it, but
So that's just their assessment information. It doesn't have anything to do with the Subarea Plan. There's, they assess all property that way. So they have to assess short term rentals differently than they assess residential property.
But this is something new.
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah. It's something new.
Yeah.
So I was just wondering if it's being, I remember Diane Dory went into the county commissioners. Uh, maybe pre-COVID, she's probably been, been gone for a year, so maybe two or three years ago. And they, you know, had a discussion about um, the fact that they were keeping tabs or investigating who had short terms rentals and they were somehow going to
Right. So I, I don't know all the tax stuff, so I would definitely encourage you to call the assessor's office. But what I do understand from it is that, that we as a county are required to assess taxes differently for income properties, which includes short term rentals across the whole county.
Does it include rental rentals, do you think?
Um, I would have to clarify with them.
And homemade, home based businesses?
I would clarify with them, but it's, but it's different taxes and we are required to do that. So we do um, use a software called Granicus to determine who owns short term rentals so that we can assess them differently than a regular residential. I don't know all the details behind it, so I would, you know, encourage you to call them.
Well, I, I will be, I will be, and I'll probably talk to the commissioners about it. But um, I was just wondering if this was being if this was coming to the forefront because of the discussion about short term rentals up in
No, it doesn't.
And whether this was countywide or just Packwood.
It's countywide and it, it is not coming to the forefront because of the Packwood stuff. We've put no new regulations in place at all.
No, I know we don't have any regulations, but you see, this is twenty twenty five, so they're planning ahead, but
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's all I got.
And just for the fun of it, uh, if you have BritBox, anybody have BritBox? No, no. Hulu? Yeah, you can probably get, get it on Hulu, a TV program called Escape to the Country. And it's exactly what we're doing, only it's set in uh, UK, all of UK. And you know, they get various people that come to look at properties and they're, they're getting out of London and blah, 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 blah. But it, it's really a fun show and oh yeah, it, it's, it's just, it's just a good, enjoyable show to watch. And it's all based on exactly what we're doing. Uh, I was first involved in uh, English town planning, you know, back in the mid nineteen seventies. So I've always had a special interest in it. And they seem to do things a little better than we. It's, it's interesting to watch. They've lost all their farmland and now they're trying to keep it.
All right. Anybody else got anything? Everybody's good? I guess I will say one thing here, go to the order. I just read a statistic that about a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars of every the cost of a, of a home is due to government regulation in Washington. And so we talk a lot about affordability. And we talk about a lot of reasons why that would be. I don't think we talk enough about how every year, uh, there's a lot of people who don't understand how uh, building or living in a house works, uh, who make a lot of decisions based on the idea that there's an endless money supply from everyone. So I mean, I, I just, that, that's always the thing that drives me crazy when we're talking about, you know, affordability. The, the biggest culprits are, are typically not called out for that. And so there's not a whole lot we can do from it, about it from here, but um, I, I just cannot cannot stand it. Um, there's just so much of that where people's, we've got a lot of people whose jobs are to just increase the cost and time it takes to build everything. Um, and so when we get rule books as, you know, as a builder um, that are, you know, twice as big every year, that multiplies out and it won't be very long. And then I think the same thing was for every thousand dollars of increased cost, you're eliminating, you know, fifteen hundred people from, from the housing market. And so these aren't small things. I mean, thirty seven percent of every home is just due to government regulation in this state. Uh, that's a, it cannot be overstated how gigantic of a number that is. And how much has changed uh, in that area. So um, there it is. That's my rant, but
Can I just as a land use player planner say thank you and always say that? Because it always seems like the regulations, like to make things more affordable fall into zoning. And I'm like, I can't help you with the cost of building a house. All I can do is change the zone. So I just appreciate that sentiment because we can only go so far with land use and zoning.
It seems to me, and I'm, you know, I'm no, you know, just a regular guy, but it seems to me there's almost nothing we can do about it. And so if people are voting, look at that stuff. It makes a huge difference. On whether, you know, and, you know, I'm always talking about energy and all those things, you know, people's energy costs are going up almost exclusively do, probably exclusively due to regulation and, and increased fees and subsidies and all these things. It's never been cheaper to produce energy and it's never been more expensive for a homeowner. So uh, by hundreds of percent. So that kind of stuff is a huge deal. And so um, I just, every time it, it comes up and I, it's a, it's a big deal. I don't, uh, I, I agree with the sentiment. I just want to make sure that that gets said because it's a, it's a huge problem and all right. So next planning commission meeting will be on June eleventh and twenty twenty four. And the agenda item will be a workshop on the comprehensive plan, periodic update, land capacity analysis and housing needs and assessment. You guys have anything else?
No, that's it.
All right.
Did, what, did we just kind of push the um, uh, what we were the, the address thing, did we push that till next? What are we doing with that?
No, you guys passed it on to
No, I know, but we, we were working on the letter of transmittal.
I put your language in, Frank signed it.
Oh, oh, that's all gone. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's all done. Okay. Yeah. No, I think, I mean, appreciate everybody's, the feedback I got. I just, I put your language in it and it seemed like it meshed already with what everybody had said last time. So I just put it in. Then, I mean, Board of County Commissioners has to pass it, but we are working on the part that you guys were concerned about of that, like, can people say no and the name doesn't get changed and that holds them up? We're already working on that. And so that'll be through our process improvement group and that's open and happy for you guys to sit in. We can tell you when we're going to talk about it and you can listen in on the conversation.
Just a side question on that. You know, if you're subdividing or adding lots or, you know, creating new lots. And the neighbors uh, don't want to pay for the cost of new addresses and new street names. Can they make a fuss in the process of uh, slowing down the process of new lots?
Yeah. So that's what, I think that's what the conversation was last time is making sure that when it's, comes to renaming, that there's a point at which the county steps in and says, this is your new name. So that we don't hold up the creation of additional lots based on a name.
Right. But that's the naming of the street. You have to have your neighbors get together. But prior to that, some um, creation of the lot itself can, people can step in at that point, knowing that later they're going to have to pay money.
Well, that's the point at which the extension of a road name would cause the renaming would be at the creation of lots. Yeah. Yeah. It would be, yeah. It would just be that when they're creating the lots, if that's an extension and it's a dashed road, they're going to have to rename the whole thing. If they can't get agreement, that could hold up the decision of making the lot division. That's when the county can step in and change the name. So that's the process that we're working on. Clarifying when the county would step in to make that name change, that we don't hold up a decision that for all other reasons can be approved, except for the neighbors don't agree. Yeah. So yeah, so that, again, that's our process improvement team will shepherd that conversation through. And those are uh, open to the public conversations.
All right. Somebody give me a motion to get out of here.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.